I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, December 6th, 2011. May I have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Mr. Scribner?
Here.
Mr. Bergner?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Mrs. Golan? Here. Thank you. The first thing I'm going to do is ask that our board members move to the seats in So if everyone would move there, we have a very, very special evening planned for you.
Everybody, thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
Happy Holidays, everybody.
Okay, board members, we have a tough act to follow, but I want to thank Mr. Haskett and the magical singers for that wonderful performance. Okay, next, next we have the president's report, and I just wanted to say that we are pleased to announce that we are making very good progress with the superintendent search. The applicant pool was quite large, and this week, the two boards, 115 and 67, will be interviewing our set of candidates. We hope to remain on target with a decision made by the middle of February. On another note, our board is still waiting to hear from the teachers' union that they have voted to ratify the contract that we negotiated with them. Once that is done, our board will meet and vote as well, perhaps at the January meeting. And that concludes the president's report. Next, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Griffith?
All right, Madam President, members of the board and members of the audience, thank you for being here tonight. Just two quick things. One, board members, the Ed Red Dinner, I would like to suggest if you have time to attend on February 6th, 6 o'clock PM. The keynote speaker will be one of the nation's leading thinkers on new teacher evaluation systems, new and improved teacher evaluation systems, so you actually might find it very interesting. And then finally, I'd like to say on behalf of Lake Forest High School, happy holidays to everyone out there, a shout-out for the holiday that's coming up, and board members, again, thank you for all that you do, and from all of our staff at Lake Forest High School. Principal Hoffman, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I know, but I'd like to thank our music department, Tim Haskett and his magical singers who perform around the area. Laura Gibson, one of our math teachers, is very vital in making a lot of the costumes for them, and those kids really enjoy what they do in the cheer shows, I'll tell you that. So happy holidays to everyone, and thanks very much.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoffman and Dr. Griffith. Next, we have public participation. If there's anyone in the audience who'd like to speak to the board on an item, on a matter that is not on the agenda, they can do so now. Seeing no one, we will move on to our reports. Our first is the assessment report. Dr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mrs. Golan. Board members, this is the annual report that at this time of the year, we give to the Board of Education with respect to student assessment and the various ways we measure student success at Lake Forest High School. I'm very pleased that Thor Benson, recently retired, or not quite so recently retired, chairman of our math department, who's assisting us part-time on our charts, and some of our analysis, and Dr. Julie Cooley are here to present what I think you will find a very interesting report on Lake Forest High School. Thor and Julie?
As Harry said, I'm Thor Benson, and I would just like to say that I really appreciate the opportunity of giving this report. It's always a pleasure to talk about the achievement of Lake Forest High School students. And to tell you the truth, I've done this for several years now, if not many years, and every year seems to get better. Our kids just are doing a fantastic job. I'd like to start with an overview of what we'll talk about tonight. First, we'll start off with the ACT results and then ranking. We'll spend a little time talking about a gender comparison. Then, like last year, I'm going to make a prediction about the class of 2012. All of the ACT data from here is for graduating class, so the last year we'll have is the class of 2011. After that, we'll talk about the plan, which, as it says, is a pre-ACT. Get to the AP results, talk about Prairie State achievement. Then we're going to spend a little bit of time on the difference between day one and day two. It's kind of significant to talk about that, so it'll take a little time on that one. I'd also like to talk about how our teachers are now using all this data.
Thor, could you speak a little closer into the microphone?
Okay, thank you. And then we'll talk about adequate yearly progress, and then give a summary. Okay, the ACT exam, it consists of four subject area exams, English, reading, math, and science. Each one has a score of 1 to 36, and then there's a composite score made up of the average of the four subject area scores, rounded to the nearest whole number. I'd like to point out that these ACT exams are based on the last exam that a student takes. When I say the last exam, each student might take an exam three times, but when the ACT Corporation calculates the average and sends it to us for a class, and sends it to the state, they only use the last exam that the student takes. They don't use the average, and they don't use the best one, it's always the last one. And if we look at our composite scores, you can see a very nice trend line here. Now, last year, we would have had these wonderful flying stars coming down, look over, because, again, we set another school record. We've gone, you know, the last few years, we're constantly setting school records, and it's just a tremendous achievement, and it shows how well our kids are doing. We really like to point out the ACT scores because that's what the colleges look at now. That's the important exam. If we make a comparison with the state, you can see that we're pulling away from how well the state does. The state is improving slightly, but we are improving at a faster pace. Here's where I make my prediction. If you remember, last year, we talked a little bit about how every class is given two scores by the ACT Corporation. One at the end of the junior year, that's based on the Prairie State exam, and that you see in the light blue there, and another that's given after the class graduates, that's based on their last exam given, and that's the one that the state insists goes in the school report card. And it's actually the one that's sent to the state. Well, if you'll notice in the blue, how they do as a junior year, you can tell that whenever they went up, they would go up and you would have the highest score. Well, next year, we might not make that record that we had, but we're still going to make the second-best that we've ever had in our history, which is really quite good. And we never know, because once in a while, if you look at history way back when, they might even pull ahead. I've never seen any fall backwards on it. If they do anything, they'll do better. And this is a graph that represents the English department. It shows 10 years' worth of ACT scores. And as a former math teacher, I hate to admit it, but this department is really doing quite well. When you look at the ACT scores here, it's absolutely amazing. They're constantly going up, and this year, there should be a double-flying star for that 27.3 average. It's a phenomenal showing. It's something that our schools should be very proud of, and the class of 2011, I might add, should be proud of that. In reading, the same thing, a little bit more bumpy, but the important thing is to look at trend lines. Looking at one year's score isn't all that important. You look at the trend over a number of years, and here, we're going upward, but our final score for the last couple of years has been the highest we've ever had, and so this score is amazing. And I'm going to come back to our reading scores on the ACT, because there's a little surprising development that we'll see later on. When we come to math, again, we have the highest scores we've ever had, with that 26.9. It's really remarkable. And it, well, I'll move on to science. Science, again, there should be a double star coming down on this one. I know 25.9, while it's the highest we've ever had, doesn't sound like it's as high as the others. But if you remember the discussion we had two years ago here, that science score is really top-notch in terms of a percentile, it would be just as high as the others, it's just that science people are tougher graders. They don't like to give those high grades. Before we talk about ranking, I'd just like to review a little bit about the difference between open enrollment schools and selective enrollment schools. Open enrollment schools are schools that accept everyone in the district, it's like us. Selective enrollment schools have acceptance based on satisfying certain conditions, usually how well they do on national exams, or exams that the schools themselves give, or previous grades, or combination of all of them. And if we look at the top ACT performance, I have the selective schools in red, and if we look at all the schools, including those schools, we would be number five. But I really think the fair way to do it is to look at what you see in black, the open enrollment schools, and then we would come out number three with a nice top score. When we get to the gender comparison, this is kind of interesting for us. The class of 2009 was the last class that we had that followed national trends. And when I say a national trend, it would be that the girls are going to do better in English and reading, and the boys are going to do better in math and science, and then the composite score, well, sometimes the boys will be a little better by a little bit, and sometimes the girls will be a little better by a little bit, and sometimes they're tied, and we've had everything over the years. All right, but this year, for the class of 2011, it's the same as what happened last year. The boys came really close to the girls in English, and they actually beat the girls in math, reading, and science, and on the composite. Now, is this a national trend? And the answer to that is, we really looked at the national averages, and the answer to that is no. We talked to someone in District 214, though, and he said they had the same thing happen to them, it's really weird. But we've also looked ahead, remember I said they have a junior exam? I think next year, when this report is given, you're going to see the girls really outdoing the guys. So it's going to vary, but over time, it'll average out. The plan exam shows something interesting. I have the years from 2009, or the class of 2009 through 2014 in here. 2011 is the one in the middle, and that's the class that we've talked about. The plan exam is given to juniors, is given to sophomores in October of the sophomore year, and it's a pre-ACT exam. It has the same four subjects that the ACT exam has. The scores range from 1 to 32 instead of 1 to 36, but it also has a composite that's based on the average of the other four, rounded to the nearest integer. If you look at the class of 2011, for the most part, you could see the same trend as you saw with the ACT. The one to look at here is the one in red, the class of 2014. Julie has been talking to me about this class for the last couple of years, and same with the eighth-grade teachers. And when they took the test here, you can just see how they're doing on everything. So I expect down the road, we're going to see some pretty good results from the class of 2014. And I might add that, you know, the elementary schools and the middle schools, they all have an effect, just like the high school, on how well kids do on these tests. I think it really shows probably a little more on the plan than on the ACT, because the plan's given after just one year of high school. But nevertheless, the whole system as a whole, all the feeder schools and the high school are really doing a great job with the kids. We'll get to AP. What this slide shows is the list of all AP classes that are offered by the college board, and the one with a black asterisk by them are the ones that are the tests that we gave last spring. If you look at our results, the last few years have been really remarkable. What this slide shows is the percentage of students who actually are passing their AP exams that are given every year. Now, AP exams are graded from 1 to 5. You can almost think of it as like from F to A, only that people like numbers, and I don't blame them. If you grade, have it 1 to 5, and then 3, 4, and 5 are considered to be passing grades. And 93% is a very high percentage of passing grades on that. The last time we were able to get a 50-school comparison on this was 2009, and then the highest school was 93%. They didn't make one last year, but they're in the process of making one this year, and as soon as we get it, we'll forward it to the board, so you can see that 50-school The Prairie State Achievement Exam, this is what No Child Left Behind uses to rate us, or what I should say, the state of Illinois uses for No Child Left Behind. It consists of two days of exams. We have measures of student achievement relative to the Illinois learning standards. The ACT exam is day one. So on the first day, all of our kids take the ACT exam. On the second day, the work keys exam is used to measure reading and math, and then there's a state-developed test for science. Social studies is not tested anymore, and writing was reintroduced in 2007, but the state won't give a writing exam this year, just to save a little bit of money. Our reading scores that you see here, it goes up and down a little bit, but you know, any time you're scoring above 80% on this is really tremendous. We'll talk a little bit more about our scores on reading and all of the Prairie State in general later on, and the difference between day one and day two. But please note, it only takes a few students to change a percentage point. Four students not doing well will change our score by a percentage point, so be aware of that. In writing, it's really a tremendous score, at 87.3%. In math, 83.6%, very nice score. When I say percent, that's the percent of students that meet or exceed state standards, in other words, sort of passing. And what I'm showing here will be a graph representing the percentage of our students that met state standards, either meet or exceeds. In science, it's 82.5. Now, let's rank using the Prairie State exam. Well, the criteria we like to use for ranking is the ACT. Why? It's because that's what the colleges use, that's what our kids know is important, and that's what our kids focus on. Now, the Tribune, they'll use the Prairie State exam, and they rate schools using the percent of meets or exceeds. All right, that's what I showed on the graph. The Sun-Times uses the Prairie State exam, but they use an average of our kids' scores to rank schools. In other words, every student gets a score on a test, and you can just rank that. They don't look at meets or exceeds or any of that. All right, I have two charts here, but I'm going to focus on the open enrollment school parts. Using the ACT exam, we would rank number three. Using the Tribune method, of the percent that meets or exceeds, we'd rank number seven. Using the Sun-Times method, we'd rank number six. Now, that seven on the Tribune is down one from last year, but the six from the Sun-Times is up two from last year. So we're moving there. But the question we have to ask is, when the ACT is half the exam, why is there such a difference here? So we look at the two-days exam, and we found that on day one, we would rank number two in reading. I'm only talking about reading and math here, because that's all No Child Left Behind uses when it comes to deciding how well we do. On day one, we're number two. On day two, we're number 34 in reading. In math, we're number three. On day two, we're number 17. Last year, we sort of had the same problem, and remember, we said we were going to really emphasize it to our kids? Well, it worked for math, because we moved from number 29 to number 17 in math, so it helped there. Didn't work for us in reading. Now, I don't know if that's because reading is the very last exam that's given on day two, after two days of testing, and our kids really know that the only test that's important to them is the ACT. But anyway, we looked a little further. Now, I'd like to emphasize here that by far, most of our kids really take day two seriously and do a great job. But we had 18 students who scored a zero on the day-two exam, who had very strong ACT scores on day one. And when I say strong, there were several of them that scored in the 30s, and they ended up meeting anyway, because... and they ended up meeting anyway, because their ACT was so high that the state said they met standards. They didn't care if they got a zero on day two. Now, others didn't make standards, but they easily could've. We know how those tests are. We know our kids can do it. We had 78 students that scored less than five, and the day-two exam is graded from 1 to 7, and there really is no grade that's labeled as a failing grade per se. But generally, it's considered that if you're gonna have a five or more, you're gonna meet, but it isn't technically labeled that way by the state. But we had, like I said, 78 students scored less than five and had more than 21 on day one, the ACT. On the Math, we only had four students that scored a zero on day two that had strong ACT scores on day one. I mean, we did a better job emphasizing "do well" the second day and "take it seriously." We did a better job in Math, and it's something we have to work on. But we don't have to work on it with the whole school. We have to just find those certain kids that aren't gonna take it seriously. Because if we had 18 kids in Reading take that test seriously, we'd be up four percentage points. And that would be great. And that would change our relative position quite a bit. Okay, the data analysis tools, INFORM. If you remember, we bought INFORM for all of our teachers, and our teachers are now using that. They have it available to them, and it's... Every time I show it to another group of teachers, they're super excited about it. They just can't believe that they have all that information at their fingertips. Let me show you an example, and I picked a math class, what else, or a math teacher, rather, but I blocked out all the names. This particular math teacher has two sections of the same course. And what I have here, it's a senior class, so they all took the ACT exam, and I just put up the scores for ACT Math. So this student, or this teacher, even though he has the exact same course, but the two different sections are gonna be different to teach. Because you can see, one section has a lot more kids having trouble in Math. They're not really bad. There's nobody here who's at the lowest level. But he has more kids in one, so that's gonna affect his teaching. Now, I did check most of the sections, and for the most part, it took me a while to find one of these, to be honest with you. Because most of the sections were pretty even for how the kids did. But every now and then, you'll have something like this. Another thing that they can do is drill down. If they're worried about a particular student, they can find out every exam that the student took that's put into INFORM, all the national or final exams, things like that, as well as their transcript. Now, this is only available for students that the teachers currently have. They can't find out anything about a student unless they're in their present class. But for example, this teacher might look at it and say, "Oh, I'm giving a lot of word problems, and he or she, whoever this is, has trouble reading. Maybe I have to work with him another way." It allows them to pinpoint instruction and work with each kid as an individual. Okay, for the Illinois Accountability System, you probably know that we didn't make adequate yearly progress this year. We made it last year, but not this year. And obviously, that's disappointing, but we looked into it, and we saw that eight of the 650 high schools in Illinois who took the Prairie State exam made AYP. All the rest didn't. And of the eight, only three were open enrollment schools. And to tell you the truth, the three that made it, in some case, I think in all three cases, made it because of what's called the safe harbor. And so if everybody had to, if no one was in the safe harbor because they did poorly the year before, no one would've made it. The benchmark for AYP this year was 85% of our kids had to meet state standards. The benchmark last year was 77.5. And it goes up until by 2014, it'll be 100% have to make it. Now, that's from No Child Left Behind. And everybody knew that 10 years ago, but they decided to pass it and do it anyway. And as you probably read in the paper, you know that they're trying to change it now. All right? Because otherwise, will any school make AYP in 2014? And will it make any sense to have it if nobody does? By the way, the Prairie State is gonna significantly change in 2014, from what I've read in the paper. It'll all be given on computer. There won't be any pen or pencil. It will not necessarily have the ACT involved with it. It's gonna significantly change. Anyway, the highlights of the year. The class of 2011 had our all-time highest average score in all subjects, as well as the composite score. The AP exam, we had the second highest number of exams ever given at our school, and we continue to have a very high percentage of passing scores, and it's the highest percentage we've ever had. Well, tied with last year. And for the Prairie State exam, again, we have a high percentage of students that continue to meet or exceed standards. Remember that the state average is just around 50%. We're above 80 on all of them. Our students value that first-day exam. They get outstanding scores there. But we need to continue our efforts to get all of our kids. And again, I want to emphasize, most of our kids take it very seriously and do a great job. But we've gotta get all of our kids, because if we could get them all, we would easily move up 4 or 5% and be right at the top for all of that. Any questions?
Thor, if we were to look at the peer districts we typically measure ourselves against academically, would we see the same fall-off in day-two PSA results?
You know, not on all of them, and so we have to find out what they're doing. Because I'm sure their kids are just as bright as ours, and they know day two doesn't count. I mean, doesn't count toward them getting into college. Again, it's that handful that we have to worry about. It doesn't take more than our 18 or 20 kids to really take it seriously, and we'll be right up there with all of them. So how do we do that?
We've talked about that a little bit in our Education Committee meeting as well. We think some schools are offering some kind of incentive to students for day two, whether it's, you know, a half-day off, or, you know, something. And then, we did talk to, and I know Julie will address this, but the testing is gonna change substantially in 2014, so, you know, we don't know what to expect in terms of the test at that point. But maybe you have more information on what other schools might be doing.
Well, actually, I'm still in the waiting-to-see mode with what they'll do at the high school. It seems a little more clear what they're gonna do with the elementary grades. It'll likely be a computer-adaptive test, where if a student scores something correct, they'll get a harder item. There will be formative tests, though. That looks quite clear. So rather than just one test in all of the high school years, it'll be a test that builds somehow, at least throughout one year, if not multiple years. Again, that's a little bit unclear exactly what it'll be, but it definitely will change significantly. Whether or not, it could potentially still include the ACT, but it's highly unlikely. Maybe "highly" is too strong a word. So we are in a wait-and-see mode. Now, that doesn't mean that our colleges will change the test that they use. And so we still may be, you know, grasping onto the ACT test. I want to point out, Jim, and answer your question, too. If you look at page 21 of the Complete Assessment Report, you can see that the six schools that ranked above us, and you can pick out some of those others if you like, none of them got below a sixth or a seventh on the day-two scores. So really, they... There'll be a few that show a stronger variance on the day-two, but none as dramatic as ours is the reality of it.
Other questions, board members?
I'd just like to make a comment. We've been going through these assessment reports annually for quite some time now, and I'd just like to thank both Thor and Julie. I think by far, this is the best one that I've seen, the most in-depth one. I understand that the full assessment report is gonna be on the website. Is that the understanding? And I would encourage anybody with an interest to delve more deeply into this data and some of the reasons behind the variations that you may or may not see. I know there's a whole section devoted to public reporting of rankings, like the Newsweek rankings and the Washington Post rankings, and why they came out the way they did and what have you. And it's just a wealth of information, and I just want to say thanks for the best report yet. Thank you.
One quick question. Julie, can you explain why there's this wild swing in the AP, number of AP tests taken? We go from '09 from 779, last year 951, this year 850.
You know, it's really hard to say there. I don't know if it was just the economy, they didn't want to spend $85 on a test, or if they were going to schools that maybe they think weren't gonna use it. I can't say. I wish I had an answer to that one, and it's one that we've actually asked. I mean, hard to tell. I don't know if you have any more to add.
No, I can't add much more, and I don't know if Jay wants to speak to this at all.
There is a phenomenon that we do have some APs that sophomores take. And there's a wider range of courses offered, or sections that occur as sophomores. Sometimes there's three sections, 75 kids. Sometimes there's two with 50. And that swing of 25 makes a big difference, because it adds 25 to one year, and then lessens it later, because they don't take that same course over. So it does, it has swung by the way that our sectioning has run out in the years. And I think last year was the year where we had the most sophomores and juniors in AP. And then last year was slightly down, because they had already taken them.
That would make more sense.
Other questions? All right, anything else you want to add? This was pretty heavy Weekend Reading, I have to say. There was a lot to get through. But I like the way you put it together so that you could skim, but then go back and then pick up on it. But it sounds like the same thing, trying to get just a handful of kids to figure out, you know, what their actions involve. And yet, we're so proud of how they perform on the ACTs. We really can't say too much.
I think that, to stress, the day-two is gonna be important. But next year, because they've taken the Writing off the test, the ACT that they take with us will have less value to them, because it's not complete. So we're actually a little concerned about that. So we do want to stress, though, to families, that it still will be an important, at least a practice test for students. So they should do their best, so they can judge how they might do later. But also, they are required to take it. Some people are saying, "Well, it's not the official test. Perhaps I won't even take it." Well, that is not a possibility. We'll be hounding down people who choose not to come that day. Now, hopefully, that won't happen, because we've always had excellent attendance. But that will be something that we kind of put out to the community a little bit. We are already starting that, but we'll continue to do that.
That sounds like something the Counseling Department should be emphasizing when they meet with both parents and students, because a lot of things do depend on those tests, whether it's of direct benefit to the students or not. I just want to add my thanks to both of you. You did a great presentation at our Education Committee meeting, and we're responsive to our feedback and a terrific report tonight, and then in all the additional materials that you've given the board, so thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And I could add that Dr. Griffith actually directed me to find out if we could purchase that Writing ACT to make that test complete, even though the state wasn't providing it. ACT will not do that, so.
Interesting. All right. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have our Board Committee reports. The first is our Board Education Committee, Nikki.
We haven't met since the last board meeting, and we'll meet in January, but the date has not been determined yet.
Thank you, Nikki. Next, Board Operations Committee, Dick Block.
Thank you. The Operations Committee has not met since the last board meeting either. We had a meeting scheduled for the 22nd of November that had to be canceled due to administrator scheduling issues. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 13th at 8:00 a.m. in the Wedge Cafe at East Campus, and again, other board members and the public. We'd invite anybody who is interested to attend. We will be discussing further the impacts of the proposed Booster Club Diamond Anniversary campaign, progress on our goals and objectives for the coming year, and our five-year capital plan. Again, December 13th, 8:00 a.m., Wedge Cafe.
Thank you, Dick. Board Finance Committee, Jim Carey.
The Finance Committee has not met since our November board meeting.
All right, thank you. That's not to say these people haven't been working hard. There's a lot going on all the time in the district. Okay, there are no liaison reports, so moving on, we have our first action item, and that's the adoption of the 2011 tax levy. Dr. Griffith?
Okay, board members, this is the annual time for the Board of Education to consider its tax levy. This year, for the 2011 tax levy, Alan Elvis is here to give an overview of what's behind the recommendation on tax levy.
I was gonna start by thanking Thor, because it's never easy following him. And last year, if you remember, he had animation in his PowerPoint. And I just have a couple scraps of paper, so I... On an annual basis, taxing bodies in Illinois must adopt and file a tax levy by the last Tuesday in December. And the Board adopted a tentative levy at your November meeting, and it's recommended that those figures, which are in your packet tonight, be adopted as the final 2011 tax levy. When filing the levy with the county, the district must also submit a truth in taxation certificate and a compliance signed by the Board President, and a certification of tax levy ordinance signed by the Board Secretary or Clerk. And both those documents are in your packet as well. Just a little background information. In October, the tentative levy figures were reviewed with the District's Finance Committee at a joint meeting held with District 67, and those figures were endorsed. As I said earlier, we brought that to the Board for the tentative levy in November, and that was adopted by the Board. What is showing up on the screen is what we project to be generated from this year's levy. And you see about 2/3 of the way down, a highlighted box. That would represent an increase from existing property owners of about 1.5%. Now, I always have to clarify, that's in the aggregate. What happens to you as an individual homeowner depends on what happens to the value of your house in relationship to everybody else. That also anticipates about a half a percent in increased revenue from new construction growth. The county provides a projection to us. They had estimated about $15 million worth of new construction. Not really sure where that is gonna be, but that's the figure that we're using in our numbers. So what's up there right now is what we anticipate to get. So if you keep in your mind, $31,892. The levy that we're actually asking you to adopt is for, if you look at that shaded box again, $32,200, which is a 2.98% increase over the prior-year extension. Now, why do we do that? Because the new construction number is a projection at this point, and it won't be known until next spring. So when we design the levy, what we want to do is capture any new growth from new construction. If we're right in all our assumptions, and it comes in at the $31,892 number, the fact that we levy $32,200, or $35 million, or $40 million, becomes... that we levy 32,200 or 35 million or 40 million becomes irrelevant, because the formula will knock us back down to the number that we project, the 31,892. So again, it's not, by levying this or even a higher amount doesn't mean that we as individuals are going to pay anymore, because if we're over what the formula produces, the tax cap Recently, Mr. Carey and I think Mr. Pendursky from District 67 met with a group of realtors, and this was a sheet that we had used, I think, a year ago, and I was asked to update this. So I've done that, and I wanted to share it with you tonight. I could have picked a little better colors on the schools, but I'll try and point them out. The first one is District 115, and if you read down the column, what this is showing is that if you take a house with a market value of $1 million, for tax purposes, you take one-third of that. Now, I didn't bother with the homeowners exemption and that, but roughly, it's a third, so $333,000. Times our 2010 tax rate of $1.10 per $100 of EAV means that if I owned a million-dollar house, or a market value of $1 million, I paid $3,670 in taxes to District 115. If I take that house and move it a few miles south into Highland Park, and it still has the same market value on it, times the Highland Park tax rate, means I would pay $6,403 to the Highland Park High School District, or a difference in dollars to what is paid in 115 of $2,733. And you can go across the board. Libertyville, Stevenson, Glenbrook, and Nutria, I have those asterisk. Glenbrook and Nutria are in Cook County. Cook County assesses residential property at 16%, businesses at 47%. While we generally experience a multiplier of one, Cook County has a state multiplier that's higher. I've never worked in Cook County, so I'm not as familiar with it. I talked to a counterpart, but basically, again, if that house were moved to Glenbrook and Nutria, million-dollar market value, it shows what the difference in taxes would be. So in analyzing that, we also tried to look at and say, "Well, why is that? We know we benefit. We have high property value and relatively low student enrollment." And Mr. Carey and I had this discussion about, "Well, maybe the home values here are higher than in some surrounding communities," but did a kind of back-of-the-napkin calculation about a home, if you move that house to Highland Park to pay the equivalent amount of taxes, that EAV would have to drop to about $192,000, which means it almost has to be about half the market value of a home here. So I think there are multiple things at play here, but the fact is, we have a low tax rate comparatively.
Is District 113 a K through 12?
113 is a high school district.
Deerfield and Highland Park.
These are all high school districts.
Jim, I live in Highland Park, so I pay Highland Park taxes. The elementary district tax rate is almost exactly as the high school. I think another way to say it, to summarize it, Alan, is that if you look at the tax bill of Lake Forest residents, total tax bill, that District 67 and 115 account for almost exactly 50% of the total tax bill. In Highland Park, it's 71%, the two school districts, of the total tax bill. In Libertyville, it's 70% of the total tax bill. In all the other communities around us, it's much, much higher than ours.
Last year, when I did this presentation, I had some figures from the county, and on average, I think throughout the county, it was 65 or 66% of the tax bill goes to schools. In Lake Forest, Dr. Griffith is correct, it was around 50, and I think in the combination of the high school and Lake Bluff Elementary, if my memory is right, it was around 60. It was still less than the average in the county. This is basically the same chart, just for people who are more visual, just showing the taxes. Now, there can be some things that impact this, because this includes the debt schedules, so depending on where somebody is. But remember, we're right in the middle of our $54 million, so we have a significant amount of debt built into ours on here as well. I don't know the individual districts. I didn't drill down that far to see where they're at in that. Okay, so lastly, we actually pass a levy by fund, so it does add up to that shaded box, 32.2 million. The bonds from the referendum, the long-term debt, is done separately by the county. So what you're levying is the 32.2. This chart shows it compared to last year's extension by fund and the changes in there. We move money around sometimes from year to year to cover deficits, to make sure we have fund balances or build them up where we want to have them. Again, even though this is showing excluding bond and interest, an increase of 2.98% or with bonds, 2.5, I think the increase to most homeowners will be around, well, 1.5 to existing property owners. The total revenue increase I anticipate is very close to 2%. And historically, we're very close on those numbers. Again, the only variable here is the amount of new construction that comes in. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll make, I guess, a comment and a question. Over the years, I've, you know, heard from constituents many times about taxes, and, you know, they'll make a comment like, "Well, I haven't seen that the district has increased our taxes, so I guess there's not going to be a tax rate increase, or there's not going to be a tax increase on my property tax bill," and that sort of thing. And I guess I'm interested in making sure the community knows that, you know, this is sort of where the rubber meets the road, and the vote we're about to take is indeed a vote to increase property taxes by the amount that you talked about, I think, $1.5 from existing property owners. Can you comment on that, Alan, and just go over what that means in the property tax extension limitation law, and how that governs and that sort of thing, just in summary?
Sure, and what I can do is actually show you tax rate, and I'll put that up in a moment. But you notice in this process, we have not talked about tax rate, because what we levy are dollars. And the tax rate is the end product now. Years ago, before the tax cap, it had a little bit more of a driving force in this, it was a little more significant, but it simply is the end product now. Because the way the formula works is you take the prior year extension. So in this case, it's 31,268,410. Under the property tax formula, the CPI that's going to be used for next year is 1.5%. That came out last January. So the law allows that extension to be increased by 1.5% on existing property.
Because that's what CPI was nationwide for calendar.
The CPI, the national CPIU is measured from December over December.
2010.
Correct. Then the tax cap formula in Illinois backs out new construction and treats that differently. So you go through and you figure out, what is the, well, actually, I'll show it here. I wish I had a laser pointer, because this would work better, but you see, the first thing we do is calculate, what do we think the equalized assessed value is going to be? That's that $3 billion number near the top. Then we figure out, what is the revenue from existing property? So what was last year's extension? You take out the bond and interest, because that's done separately, and you get the number, the 31,268,410. That number then gets increased by the CPI, becomes 31,737,436. That gets divided by the projected EAV, less new construction, and that gives us a tax rate. And so, when you work it all the way down, and you add the bonds back in, and finish the formula, and do the new construction, as I said earlier, we anticipate to receive $31,892,764 if the board approves the levy. The tax rate would actually go from $1.18, or from, I think it was $1.10, up to about $1.18. That's because one of the assumptions we have in here, if you look up at the top, you see a negative 6%, and that's what we're projecting to be the decrease in property value across the district. Now, that's a projection. So we have to see how that falls. But all that really will change is not the dollars so much as the ending rate. If it doesn't fall that much, then the ending rate will be lower. If it falls greater than that, then the ending rate gets higher. But I think the takeaway, it's a very convoluted formula and process. I think the takeaway is, if I'm an existing homeowner, in the aggregate, the school district under the formula of the law can increase their extension by 1.5%. So if my house stays the same relationship to everybody else, that's what I would expect to see in a tax increase.
So if I can try to summarize, we're allowed by law to increase taxes from existing property owners by the CPI increase for the prior calendar year. We don't have to do it, but we're allowed to do it without voter approval. If we wanted to go for more than that, we would have to seek voter approval through a referendum, and so with this vote tonight, we'll be agreeing to take another 1.5% in aggregate from existing property owners. And we only deal with the gross dollars. The tax rate is actually a back-calculated number. Once the county comes to an equalized assessed value for all the properties, again, they just take those dollars and divide it by that value to get the tax rate, right?
That's correct, and you made the comment, "We don't have to take it," and you're absolutely right. The board could choose not to do this levy. But one of the, what I consider the big flaws in the tax cap formula is that every year is based on the preceding year extension, and just to clarify.
By extension, you mean tax revenues, just to clarify.
Exactly. The dollars received the prior year. And so this question came up, and I did call the county to get clarification on it. And so if you said, "We're not going to levy the full amount," or "We're going to abate," this increase represents about, represents about a $600,000 increase. So if you said, "Well, we're going to abate $300,000 and just not take it this year," it's not only a one-year decision, because that changes your base going into next year's calculation, even if you abate it. And I wasn't sure on that, so I had to call and get clarification. The county does do a thing, there is in statute something called a three-year lookback, where if, in the past three years, the amount extended was higher than the amount you levy, they'll use that in future years. You almost have to put pencil to paper, but it's still the same end result. It changes your revenue stream going forward.
And lastly, I know there's been some public comment about teacher's contract and these kinds of things, and what we might be able to do without a tax increase versus what would require a tax increase. The fact of the matter is, any reasonable person is going to conclude that we need to increase taxes by the amount allowed under this tax cap law, CPI, for the foreseeable future, just to get our reserves back to the minimum levels that we'd like to see them. Isn't that correct? Isn't that your?
There was a statement in the paper about a settlement would not cause anyone's taxes to go up, and I think with very narrow interpretations, that's correct, because we've levied to the tax gap historically, as do most taxing bodies. I think that was a disingenuous statement, because it glosses over the fact that expenditures have exceeded revenues over the past several years, and that would have only exacerbated that.
Well, the fact of the matter is, the only way we could live without increasing the tax rate would be to decrease the costs, or in this case, decrease teacher pay, which nobody's asking for.
Or a number of teachers.
Yeah, right.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other board members who have questions of Alan?
Well, I think the only other point to play off what Dick was just going through is that the 1.5 does impose financial or fiscal discipline on the districts to live within their means, rather than go out and ask for an operating rate increase, et cetera, from the taxpayers. The fact is that, yes, we are asking for 1.5, and for the average taxpayer, assuming everybody's stayed, their home values stayed where they are, they'd see about a 1.5% increase in that portion of their tax bill next May or June when they get their bill. But the fact is that we are still not collecting enough money to get our reserves back to the level where they need to be to meet our own target in terms of having 10% reserves on hand for those inevitable problem days down the road, similar to the ones we just went through.
Not in one year, but I think the settlement we did, the budget that you adopted this fall has started us on that path, but no, not in one year.
So all the work that has been done with the contract that the union is now looking at to ratify is reflected in here. All the cuts that have been put in over the last several years and tightening of screws and contracts wherever we could is reflected here, and the end result is a 1.5% increase in general for the average taxpayer.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elvis. All right, may I have a motion, please, to adopt the 2011 tax levy?
I move that the Board of Education approve of the adoption of the 2,000 levy as presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any other comments? Any from the audience? Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. And next, we have the approval of an employee disciplinary notice. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the employee discipline notice as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan? Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the Human Resources Report. Dr. Griffith?
Yes, board members, again, tonight, we have Jen Knight here with us, so thank you so much, Jen.
Good evening. I actually had a multimedia presentation, but I didn't want to make Alan feel bad, so I just scrapped it, and I'm going paperless. Fireworks, actually, real. Thank you Cornelius for the assist with that.
Hey, I had madrigal singers. I'm still the big winner tonight.
True. I can't compete with the kids, however. I did want to share a few ongoing items. As you saw, our report this month is actually even thinner than last month. It's been quiet in terms of our hirings and departures now that we're mid-year, but it has still been busy in terms of what's going on with our teachers. We have Jim Poulson coming in again on Thursday this week to work with our PLT group, our principal leadership team. He has been coming in in an ongoing series this year to focus on our observation and evaluation techniques at the administrative level. Our focus has really been on building the process out to a formative process, not just an evaluative process. We were spurred on by the shift to a four-tier system that the state has brought in, but also have really been pleased with the opportunity to create greater clarity and consistency in our own decision-making. This has gone on side by side with a joint administrative and staff, faculty effort to prioritize and articulate what do we really mean when we say someone is a good teacher? What does good teaching really look like in our classroom? So Jim Sullivan has been working closely with our union president and then committees broken up from that point to have some meaningful and collegial conversation about just what that is. There have already been some, just some short-term benefits in having the conversation, thinking more closely about what it is that we mean when we say good teaching. thinking more closely about what it is that we mean when we say good teaching, but it will surely bring long-term benefits to our students in the classroom. And it really does show that teachers are still learners, and thinking about their craft is something that brings passion to each and every one of them. Our fourth late start actually is tomorrow. The students will be happy about that. Faculty will still be reporting on their normal start time. This has been time ongoing this year for departments to look a little bit more closely at what they're doing. We have had departments do showcases. We've had emotional wellness discussions happening in various departments. We actually have, in the past couple late starts, focused more on that 2020 board objective and have even started some initial conversation about how we might use our First Try District Day to break out that 2020 piece in a way that's meaningful for the K through twelve Lake Floris, Lake Bluff, and Knollwood community. Dr. Cooley has been instrumental in kind of getting us, getting our thinking caps on about February. I just know that it snows between now and then, but she's thought further than that. Lastly, and on a different note, but in that kind of holiday spirit, we have been exploring through our office the possibility of addressing some of the other holiday issues related more to waistlines and general fitness, and have opened up the possibility of having a LFHS fit club that would be open to all faculty and staff post-holiday, doing it in the kind of team-building, coaching piece. We opened out, just a call of interest to staff, and sixty faculty and staff responded immediately. And by immediately, I mean within the first hour of an email being sent out. So then we realized we had gotten ourselves into something, and we have now started researching community resources that would be interested in supporting this. People are really excited about it. It is, it goes not to just working together, but also supporting one another in a general staff wellness. So just the interest alone shows that it will probably be an adventure for us all to pick up in January. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions? All right. Thank you. Then may I have a motion to approve the Human Resources Report?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. And next, we have the Consent Agenda. If there's any item that a board member would like to have removed, they can do so now. All right. Seeing none, the Consent Agenda consists of, one, the approval of the financial report and schedule of checks written; two, approval of minutes of a regular meeting from November eighth, 2011; an executive session, November eighth, 2011; minutes of a special meeting, November twenty-eighth, 2011; minutes of an executive session, November twenty-eighth, 2011; and the destruction of audio recordings from January twelfth, 2010. May I have a motion, please?
So moved. That the Board of Education approve the Consent Agenda as it's presented?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Scribner?
Aye.
Mr. Edson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Carey?
Aye.
Mr. Bergner?
Aye.
Mr. Block?
Aye.
Mrs. Golan?
Aye. Motion carries. We have some FOIA requests that came in. The first is from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. The second is from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. The third FOIA request comes from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. The fourth FOIA request comes from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. The fifth FOIA request comes from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. The sixth FOIA request comes from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. And the seventh FOIA request comes from Nancy Thorne, three-three-one East Bloggett Avenue, Lake Bluff, Illinois. Are there any future agenda items a board member would like to have placed on the agenda? Seeing none, our announcements are, December seventh is a late start day; December nineteenth to January second will be winter break; January third, school resumes; and our next Board of Education meeting will be here on January tenth at seven o'clock PM. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. And happy holidays.